If they are available, we do have some up here towards the front. And we will start the meeting on Monday, October 21st, 2024. The City Council begins at 7:00 here in the Council Chambers. So I would like to call the meeting to order. And if we would have a disaster, we would go to the basement if there would happen to be a tornado. And we would go outside through the exits for fire. And then if we have before planned to meet at Public Square, 10 Public Square, just to make sure that everybody's accounted for. Okay, the meetings are being videotaped, so it's important that we all speak directly into the microphone. And so I, we will begin with the roll call of alderperson. Jenny?
Alderperson Whitaker.
Here.
Alderperson Schneider.
Here.
Alderperson Duco.
Here.
Alderperson Eris. Alderperson Randall.
Here.
Alderperson Ferguson.
Here.
Alderperson Anthony.
Here.
Alderperson Ovian.
Here.
Alderperson Dittelman.
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer.
Here.
Alderperson Steele. Alderperson Rothweiler. Alderperson Elmore.
Here.
Alderperson Weigant.
Here.
Alderperson Sullivan.
Here.
Alderperson Ostoff. Mayor Eris, Steele, Rothweiler, and Ostoff are excused.
Thank you very much. Roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Beerman.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Present.
Police Chief Matt Iskant.
Here.
Fire Chief Stephanie Mills.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Race Water Randy Smith.
Director of Library Lee Spearman.
Here.
Director of IT Ty Buckner.
Here.
City Engineer Scott Sager.
Here.
Director of Health Housing Building Scott Tyler.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Planning Zoning Cliff Cross.
Present.
Director of Human Resources Bill Clay.
Present.
Director of Maintenance Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Mayor Randy Smith is excused, and Jake Goddard is here for him.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No public hearing this evening, and so we will start with public participation. Inti, thank you very much. So who would like to speak tonight? Okay, Mr. Brown, come forward and state your name and address.
Rick Brown, 624 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Belleville, Illinois. I'm gonna change gears here a little bit. Maybe I can get you guys on my side. You know, I think we can all agree that racism is bad. Think we can get a show of hands from you guys up here? No?
We agree.
It's a, yeah, there you go. It's bad. And we got stuff going on around here that is like, it's like the stuff from the Jim Crow South. The way Belleville used to have the officers, you know, this was a sundown time. If you were black, you couldn't come up here after dark. You know, and, and, and all the facts that are out there, the, you know, you didn't have a black employee until 1992. You know, there's been a consent decree down here. And of course, the, the gate at Signal Hill, which technically is not in the city limits of Belleville. However, it is the premier ritzy community in Belleville. I think we can all agree on that. But you know what? There it is, guys. It's still there. A lot of people think maybe that it was taken out in 1993 when 60 Minutes was here. But it isn't. Not only that, there's another one just like this built right down the way on another street going from 157 in East St. Louis into Signal Hill. Now, I know you know the county board chair. This is technically under his purview. Now, as of this afternoon, he still hasn't said whether he's gonna have these removed. I've been up there three times.
I will tell you, he was at a homeless conference today.
Oh, good. Well, we got some people that can't go down a public road. And there's locks on there from the fire department? Are you kidding me? A lock over a public street by a subdivision that's private? How about if I put a street up in Belleville or a, a gate up? I'd be arrested in about 15 seconds. But I tell you what, this is the kind of crap that's gonna keep coming around as long as something, if something isn't done about it. You know, you, you gotta, you gotta do something. This city has been destroyed by racism. We have almost nothing left here. You know, it looks like a, it's starting to look like East St. Louis with all the empty vacant lots that you've torn stuff down on. You, you know, the population's gonna keep going down, and we're gonna be in this death wall. You know? Just talk to Kern, tell him, in the words of Ronald Reagan, tear these walls down.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify, that was not the, was not put up by our fire department. That would be Signal Hill Fire Department.
It was not, yes, sir.
Well, I'm just, I wanna clarify.
Signal Fire Department allows a lock on that gate, so maybe you've got a key that can get through the, hook fire. It's unsafe, you know, but.
Thank you.
All of them, and there's three.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Who else would like to speak? Okay, Stewart, come forward and state your name and address, please.
Stewart Leonard, Belleville, Illinois, 320, or whatever, I don't remember. As far as racism, I know the Belleville Police Department are afraid to arrest black people, whether that's racism or not, but I was charged with two counts of assault because some black people claimed I tried to run them down on North, or East Washington Street a while back, because they blocked the entire street. They put a bunch of little seven and eight-year-old kids across the street, and they claimed I tried to run them down. And that was 100% untrue, and the Belleville Police not once come to my house to address that problem. And there was two articles in the Belleville paper that said I got out of my truck and used the R-word and threatened to shoot them. 100% false. And as far as this other thing, this judge that used to run a gambling joint in East St. Louis who put my bond at a million dollars for a, a, a false terrorist threat, which means it wasn't even true, because the Belleville Police didn't even arrest me at all. And my girlfriend, who had a stroke about three years previously, had to travel, I was in jail for 33 days, county jail. She had to travel all the way across town to take care of my dog and the cat, and there's no way that she would not do that. She would walk through fire to take care of animals. But it put a hardship on her, because this asshole judge wouldn't reduce my bond. Thank you.
Point of order, no profanity. At this point in time, anybody else with public participation? Hearing none, we will move on. Mr. Whitaker?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda and move items 11, C-1, and C-2 to the current next item.
I'll second it.
Thank you both very much. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So at this point in time, we have a motion, I need a motion to approve the hire of Joshua Willis as a probationary police officer. This is a lateral hire, effective Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at 12:01 a.m. Do I have a second? Schaefer?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
He should be quiet.
Stewart, we're in the middle of making motions. Thank you very much, Stewart. Okay, so, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you so much. And now I'd like to have a motion to approve the promotions of Master Sergeant Beau Barfield to Lieutenant, Detective Keaton Wright and Officer Dusty Kala to Sergeant, effective October 22nd, 2024, at 12:01 a.m. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Schneider.
Yes.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to invite Chief Iskant to come up here and with the people that are, are being hired, and also the promotions.
Do you want the microphone? Yeah, one second. That's, yeah. I'm gonna introduce these three officers to everyone that doesn't know them. These are three great promotions tonight. I'm gonna start with Lieutenant Barfield. He, he started the department about 10 years ago, and he started out in the patrol division. He became a detective and worked most of his career in detectives. Most recently, he's been a shift leader on night shift, and now he'll be the squad commander on night shift. He's also a member of our SWAT team, our tactical response team, and has done an exceptional job 10 years on the department to make lieutenant. It just shows what an exceptional officer he is. Second, Keaton Wright. Keaton Wright's been with, Sergeant Keaton Wright's been with us for about six years now. He started out in patrol. He wasn't on patrol very long before we moved him to detectives because of the fine job he does. He's also a member of our special response team, and currently he's with the United States Marshals Task Force. Those are, those statistics that I give you guys at the meetings when the marshals are out there with members of the task force that are making exceptional arrests on homicide suspects, getting a lot of guns and drugs and, and things off the street. That's Keaton Wright. He's the man responsible for that. And last but not least, Sergeant Dusty Kalau. Dusty has been solid for 20 years on the police department. He's, he's been on patrol and a K-9 officer his whole career. But the thing that stands out most about Dusty is, you know, there's been a change in law enforcement over the years, and we've hired a ton of police officers. Almost every one of them goes to Dusty to be trained. He's one of our field training officers, and, I mean, Dusty is as solid as you can get with getting these men and women up to speed on how to be a patrol officer. Dusty's also the union president. He gets involved in a lot of different events, Shop With The Cop, just one that's great that gives back to, to children in our community. But all three of these guys I've worked with for some time now, and just exceptional officers, and they're gonna make a great lieutenant and two great sergeants, and I'm happy to do these promotions tonight. Thank you.
It's always a good day in Belleville when we can promote and also hire new police officers. So let's give them another round of applause.[932.12][932.12](applause) Thank you very much, and we will now move on. If I can turn my page. Okay. Tonight we have presentations and recognitions and appointments. So I will now read a proclamation recognizing Red Ribbon Week, and then I will read a proclamation Whereas the abuse of alcohol and drugs in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to the 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to a healthy drug-free lifestyle by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. And whereas the city of Belleville, Illinois supports the goals of the National Red Ribbon Campaign, and now therefore I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the City of Belleville, Illinois, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage our citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed this 21st day of October in the year of our Lord 2024. So let's have a big round of applause for this.[1085.12][1085.12](applause) And now the second proclamation will be about the Extra Mile Day. Whereas the city of Belleville is a community that acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and is why Belleville actively works to be a community of character. And whereas Belleville is a community that encourages citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, families, friends, and community. And whereas Belleville is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile, in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Belleville acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America Foundation to create 3, 550 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2024. As Belleville, being a community of character, continues to highlight the belief that communities are made stronger through individuals and organizations who dedicate themselves to going the extra mile in volunteerism and service. Now therefore I, Patty Gregory, Mayor of the City of Belleville, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2024, to be Extra Mile Day in Belleville, and encourage each individual in our community to take time on this day to go the extra mile in his or her own life, and to acknowledge all those around us who are inspirational in their efforts to make their organizations, families, communities, country, or world a better place. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the corporate seal of the city of Belleville to be affixed this 21st day of October in the year of our Lord 2024. Thank you. I have to say, as a volunteer in this community for 45 years, that is one thing that is the strength of our community. When we can put on 22 events and parades, and we have volunteers that come out, well, I hate to say like crazy, but they do, which is a good thing, to support our communities, to support our organizations, our children, people that need help in this community, I just wanna thank everybody, because that is, I think, our strongest strength that we have here. So let's give a round of applause to all the volunteers in this community.[1278.04][1278.04](applause) Now move on. Okay. Scott Sager, would you like to speak to the ADA Transition Plan Announcement for Public Comment, October 22nd, 2024 through November 22nd, 2024?
Sure. So we have a transition plan that is drafted and ready for public comment. It's gonna be available to view through the city's website and the engineering homepage. There's some flyers that are prepared, and they're gonna be posted on the city's Facebook page. But it'll be open for a required 30-day comment period, starting tomorrow and going to November 22nd. So if you all wanna look and have comments, it's open to everybody to comment and look at.
Okay, thank you. And should we share that on Welcome to Belleville also?
Yeah, and if you may, it'd be shared, it's great.
Okay, that's wonderful. And maybe our aldermen can also get that out to their constituents. Thank you, Scott. I need a motion to read together 7D, 7E, and 7F together. Okay. Thank you. Okay. I'd like a motion to approve the reappointment of Katie Dawson to serve a two-year term on the Human Relations Commission. And then I also need a motion to approve the appointment of Steve Matthews to serve the remainder of a four-year term on the Downtown Belleville Development Commission, ending on 5/26. I will tell you, it, the original motion had Robert Ekman, but he, they have a brand-new business, and he's decided to step back, so Steve will be doing that. And then also a motion to approve the appointment of Lacey Lucy to serve the remainder of a four-year term on the Downtown Belleville Development Commission, ending on 5/17/2025.
Schaefer, some move.
Thank you.
Ferguson.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now I need approval of minutes. Motion to approve the City Council meeting minutes of October 7th, 2024, and special city council minutes of September 24th through 2024.
Schaefer, some move.
Thank you.
Ferguson.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under claims, payroll, and dispersments, I need a motion to approve claims and dispersments in the amount of $1,132,572.84, and payroll in the amount of $1,020,901.35.
Ferguson.
Thank you.
Schaefer.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you so much. This evening we have no reports, so we'll start with oral reports from standing committees, special committees, and any other oral reports from the elected officials or staff. So we will start with Parks, motions from the Parks Board. Alderperson Dittelman.
We have four motions going through. Can we do them all together? Thank you. On behalf of the Park Board, I'd like to make motions for 11A1, motion to approve Gonzales Companies LLC for design services associated with Flatman Park Improvements in the amount of $22,700 TIF 3 funds. 11A2, motion to approve Gonzales Companies LLC for design services associated with Pleasant Hill Park Improvements in the amount of $15,600 TIF 3 funds. 11A3, motion to quit claim D parcel 08-28.0-232-023, back to Thomas and Joy Trebo. 11A4, motion to approve Oates Associates utilizing the hourly rates as presented in Exhibit A of the proposal with not, not to exceed value of $19,700 for the Courthouse Monument project at Centerville Avenue and West Main Street, TIF 3 funds.
Okay.
So moved.
Randall, second.
Thank you so much. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Randall.
Aye.
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you, Jenny. And now motion from Finance, Alderperson Whitaker.
Any objection to reading them as a group?
No.
Okay. On behalf of the Finance Committee, 11B1, a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and purchase one new 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe from the Illinois State bid vendor Miles Chevrolet in the amount of $56,728 for the Fire Department. 11B2, a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement to purchase Master Software Services Agreement with Waste Tech Corporation for smart city driver software with a total cost of $127,092 over five years for the Sanitation Department. 11B3, a motion to waive formal bidding procedures and utilize the Sourcewell Cooperative purchasing to purchase, excuse me, purchase one new 2025 Freightliner M231 cubic yard side-load automated sanitation truck for $353,500, and one new 2025 Freightliner M225 cubic yard rear-load sanitation truck for $258,000 from Elliott Equipment Company. And 11B4, a motion to accept and file the fiscal year 24 audit reports. So moved.
Schaefer, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Ferguson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Weigant.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Whitaker.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Duco.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will now skip 11C, the motions on one and two, because we've already have accomplished that. So now let's move to the motion from Economic Development and Annexation Committee, Alderperson Anthony.
You caught me off.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell you that, because Kara was gone. That was my bad.
I meant to tell you. That's okay.
I was having you do it.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Economic Development Annexation Committee. That would be 11D1, motion to approve a development agreement with JLP Homes LLC for the acquisition and development of the city-owned lot located at 1701 Shield Streets.
A motion to approve a minor subdivision boundary adjustment plat for the Fieldstone Apartment Complex.
Shaffer, some move.
Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under Communications, Jenny?
I can read them together, yes?
Yes.
Twelve A, Lincoln Theater Concerts, ten twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and twelve seven, twenty twenty-four. Request from Lincoln Theater to host the Box Masters Thursday, October twenty-fourth. Gatlin Brothers Christmas Show Saturday, December seventh, tw- twenty twenty-four, twelve p.m. to eleven p.m. Additional city services, closure of up to twenty-five parking spaces in the city parking lot at the corner of North High and East A. Barricades and metal bike racks. Twelve B, Lincoln Theater Concert, ten twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, eleven nine, twenty twenty-four, and eleven sixteen, twenty twenty-four. Request from Lincoln Theater to host Real Country Saturday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. Everett Dean, Saturday, November ninth, twenty twenty-four, and Steve Agiri, Saturday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, twelve p.m. to eleven p.m. Additional city services, closure of ten parking spaces in the city parking lot at corner of North High Street and East A, and barricades.
Shaffer, some move. Duco?
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we have no petitions, and so we'll move on to resolutions. Uh, I need a motion to read by title only, Resolution thirty-five twenty-five and thirty-five twenty-six.
Elmore?
Ferguson?
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Jenny?
I can read them together, yes? Fourteen A, Resolution thirty-five twenty-five, a resolution of support for submission of a Sinclair County Parks Grant Commission Cycle Thirty grant application. Fourteen B, Resolution thirty-five twenty-six, a resolution of support for the City of Belleville's application for Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, I E P A H, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, green infrastructure grant opportunities, grant funding.
Shaffer, some move.
Ferguson.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call? Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Sorry. Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Under ordinances, I need a motion to read by title only, ordinance ninety-three twenty-three.
Shae- Shaffer?
Okay, do we have the second? Oh, thank you. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Jenny?
Fifteen A, ordinance ninety-three twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the City of Belleville, Illinois, and declaring an emergency.
Shaffer, some move.
Elmore?
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Roll call? Ovian?
Aye.
Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much. Uh, tonight, we have no unfinished business. Miscellaneous and new business, I need a motion to approve motor fuel claims in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call? Diddleman?
Aye.
Shaffer?
Aye.
Elmore?
Aye.
Wagon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Duco?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Ovian?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor. Thank you so much, and tonight, we have no executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.[1785.98]